Hey everybody, welcome back to our Joshua Bible study. We are in session four tonight. I want to say thank you so much for joining us, we're super excited. Grab your Bible, we're gonna open up and start in Joshua chapter three. We'll get chat through chapters three and four tonight. If you're joining us for the first time, I want to say welcome, thank you so much for being a part, for joining us. Go to our website, we have a website, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. You can go to the toolbar and see videos and the Joshua study. We have notes on our website, PDF form, you can go there, download them. Or if you'll go to the contact us, give us your email. We'll be happy to email them directly to your inbox and we'll send you our notes for each of our Bible sessions. Thank you so much. Hey, listen, if you are a part of Whitestone or you're looking for a church, we start back in-house, live, in-person this Sunday. So excited to be back in the house of God with all of our brothers and sisters. So, we're gonna have one service this Sunday, 11:00 AM. Go to our website, you can sign up there and let us know you're coming, just so we have a place for you. And so, look forward to seeing you back in the house of God this Sunday, 11:00 AM. It's gonna be awesome, so grab your Bible, grab something to write with, grab your notes, let's dive in. And so, Holy Spirit, we ask that you give us wisdom. Open up your word, let it come into our minds, into our hearts. Let it change us from the inside out, God, let it change the way we think. Let it develop faith inside of us, God, let it renew our mind. And so, God, we love you and we bless you, in Jesus' name. And everybody said, amen. Listen, Joshua is the sixth book in your Bible. It is the first book after the Torah. The first five books in the Bible are called the Torah, the law, the Pentateuch. It's the foundation of the Jewish faith. The first book after that is the Book of Joshua. And it's a historical book, it's giving us an account of the Israelites conquering, possessing the promised land. Just a quick summary, the Israelites had just spent 400-plus years captive, slaves, building pyramids. The whipping boys of Pharaoh, slaves, he's there, they have a slave mentality for generation after generation after generation. God sends them a type of a Savior, He sends them Moses. Moses delivers them, God delivers them through Moses and leads them through the wilderness to the Red Sea. God does a miraculous miracle, He parts the Red Sea, the Bible says. So, the Red Sea was impossible to pass because of the time of year and the location that they were at. So, God supernaturally parts the Red Sea. All six million-plus Jews walk through, on dry ground, walk through and cross that Jordan, or cross the Red Sea. That gives you an indication how wide that crossing was. It wasn't just this narrow six-foot gap, it wasn't this two inches of water despite what Discovery Channel or History Channel tells you. This was a supernatural drying of the ground, supernatural parting of the Red Sea. That may have been a mile wide, we don't know, but it was, it was big enough for all of these Israelites to cross over. Donkeys, you know, oxen, whatever animals they had with them, kids, elderly people, all their stuff, they cross over. Pharaoh and his enemies sees that, they said, hey, we'll cross over. They caught pursuit, God causes the waters to cease from being separated, comes and destroys and drowns Pharaoh and all of his armies. Then miraculously, or not miraculously, tragically, the Israelites sin in the desert on the way to the promised land. We need to realize, this was about a 12-to-14-day journey from Egypt to the Jordan River, from the Red Sea to the Jordan was, was literally a couple-week journey. Took them 40 years, 40 years. They sent out 12 spies, they came back, two of them, Joshua and Caleb, says, we could take the land. 10 of them said, there's giants in the land, we're but grasshoppers, oh my God, we're gonna die. They sin against God, not believing He can take them to the territory that He promised. It's ironic, He just delivered them from Pharaoh, He just delivered them from bondage. But 12 days later, they say, no, God can't do that. So, they don't enter the promised land. In fact, they circle the desert for 40 years. They basically become nomadic and they circle the desert for 40 years until all of the males of that generation die. Now, there's a new generation of males. Joshua is now their leader, Moses is now dead. Joshua is told by God, cross the Jordan River. Joshua's given the Israelites the command, in three days, we're gonna cross the river. So, let's pick up in chapter three and let's watch this journey crossing the river. If you've never read the Book of Joshua, just read through it and then go back and read through it and then slowly read through it. So, kind of get the overall picture, but then come back and read it slowly and thoroughly and it will open your mind to what God wants to do in our life. Last couple of notes or recap. The Book of Joshua is parallel with the spiritual conquering of the land in Ephesians and it is parallel with the Book of Revelation, the return of the ultimate conqueror, Jesus Christ, who Yeshua or Joshua is the parallel name. And Jesus Christ will take us believers from this Egypt, this territory, this side of the supernatural Jordan and we will cross into the promised land, otherwise known to us more readily as heaven. It's the crossing of the promised land. So, what happened in Joshua is a type and shadow of what can happen for you and I. So, let's dive in, Joshua chapter three, verse one. "Then Joshua arose early in the morning and set out for the Acacia Grove and came to the Jordan. He and all the children of Israel lodged there before they crossed over. So, it was three days that the officer went through the camp." So, all the Israelites got as close to the river as they could, they camped out. Ironically, they camped there for three days. In your scripture, I want you to look for some numbers and I want you to start to track all the times the numbers, like three is mentioned. Jonah was three days, three nights in the belly of the whale. Jesus is three days in the tomb. This number three, I don't know the connection, but it's not just coincidental that the Bible tells us. It has a reason for being there. If it was, if it had no reason, God just would have said, and after a few days, they crossed the river. But there's a reason for three, and I think it's this. I think it's a symbol of God taking us from the old to the new, from the dead to the resurrected life. That He's literally taking an entire people, nation, generation, from their dead, non-purposeful existence and saying, look, man, I'm gonna resurrect you and take you into your promised land. Verse three. "And they commanded the people, saying, when you see the ark of the covenant..." Now, listen to this, this is really cool. "When you see the ark of the covenant of your Lord and the priests, the Levites, bearing it, then you shall set out from your place and go after it." In other words, hey, listen, people, don't tear down your tent, don't leave your home, don't be, you know, meandering around. Wait till you see the covenant, wait till you see the Levites and the priests of God bearing it or holding it, carrying it. Some of you seen pictures from Sunday School. The ark of the covenant is a container that wasn't that big itself, but it had long poles because we weren't supposed to touch it. The Israelites could not touch the Holy of Holies, the, the place where the Spirit of God dwelt, the, 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 the ark of the covenant. They couldn't touch it. So, they had these long poles, so the priests would bear it on one-on-four, you know, four or six or eight of them would carry this on these long poles and they would, and it said this, it said, don't leave, don't move until you see the ark of the covenant. Verse four. "Yet there shall be a space between you and the ark of the covenant; there shall be a space between you and it, about two thousand cubits by measure." Now, a cubit is about 18 inches, this is about a half a mile distance. And, and He says, hey, listen, keep space, don't get too comfortable, don't, don't get too comfortable and treat the ark of the covenant, don't crowd it, let it be the lead. This ark of the covenant is representative in the Old Testament, it's a representative of the Holy Spirit. Now, what we have to do is we have to wait to move till the Holy Spirit comes out and leads us. And the Holy Spirit, we don't need, necessarily need to keep a physical distance and, in fact, we don't need to keep distance, but we need to show respect and allow it to lead us. But we'll get to the reason why the distance in just a minute. "There's about two thousand cubits of measure. Do not come near it, that you may know the way by which you must go, for you have not passed this way before." Man, this is powerful. The Old Testament example is, hey, listen, you've never been to the promised land? We're not just talking about heaven. You've never been to the territory God's called you to inhabit? You've never been to that place where God wants you to go? So, don't be so comfortable that you just take off and, and then look back and go, God, are you with me? Wait for God to move, follow Him. But hey, listen, keep your eyes, keep your focus and, and the reason the 2,000 feet or the, or the, I'm sorry, the half a mile, the 2,000 cubits was because we're not talking about one family, we're talking about a nation of people. Let the Holy Spirit lead the nation into a new way. Let the Holy Spirit lead the nation in a way, a path that it has never gone before. Let it be exalted, don't treat the house of God, don't treat the word of God, don't treat the Holy Spirit as commonplace. Another way to look at that is, is in our prayer life. I don't know about you, but I catch myself all the time where I will start to pray something like this. Hey, God, thank you for this day. Listen, man, it's gonna be a tough day, I got a busy schedule, God, I need some more money in the bank, God, please don't let anything bad happen, God, would you do this and would you do this? And, and so, all of a sudden, my prayer time just went from nothing to, I need, I want, can you? Well, all through the scripture, it says, "Enter His courts with praise; enter His presence with thanksgiving, with the shaking of the tambourine, clapping, dancing, shouting, singing, exalting." Jesus even in the Lord's Prayer says, "Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done." He, He doesn't even get to the request part until He first enters with praise. This, this leading of the Holy Spirit, this leading of the ark of the covenant is a reminder for us to always exalt and put God in the front, not look back. If you notice, nobody's in front of the ark, the ark is in front of them at this point. Verse five. "Joshua said to the people, sanctify yourself, for tomorrow the Lord will do wonders among you." Sanctify yourself. Now, ceremonially, ceremonially, the Jews would have needed to do ceremonial cleaning. But He's saying, get your heart right, hey, get your life right. So many of us in our modern-day Christianity have really skewed this idea of grace. And we've just said, oh, God's grace, God's grace, God, God will cover that, God knows I'm human, God just wants me to be happy. God doesn't really care if I drop the F-bomb every now and then, I sure don't talk like I used to. God doesn't really care if I go see that movie, I'm an adult, I've seen all that before. God doesn't really care, God doesn't really want me to spread the gospel or go be a missionary or tithe. No, we've gotta sanctify ourselves. So, sanctify ourself is to be holy, set apart, to check ourself, condition ourself. Anytime you've gone to travel, any, you ever notice how you get like two weeks' worth of work done the day before you go to, go out of town for a week and a half? Like, the day before travel, you get your house cleaned, you get all your work done, you get, you get everything organized, it's like, it's a miracle. Stacy and I are like, hey, we should go out of town more often, we, we get everything in order. We're sanctifying ourself, we're preparing ourself for travel. If you travel internationally or you travel to different parts of even the continental United States, you have to have ID, you may have to have your passport, you gotta have your tickets, you gotta have, you gotta, you gotta prepare yourself. What God's telling them is, listen, sanctify yourself, for tomorrow, the Lord's gonna do a miracle. Have you ever asked God for something, but you didn't bother to prepare yourself for what you asked Him for? You ever said, God, I sure wish you would do miracles in me? God says, well, prepare yourself. Well, how do you want me to prepare myself? I want you to get up early and pray, I want you to fast, I want you to go erase half of your playlist on your, on your, you know, musical device. I want you to go and throw out those nasty novels that you've kept since high school. I want you to go do some things that sanctify yourself. You ever ask God for prophetic dreams or vision? But you're not worried about what you're watching in the natural or what you're viewing in the natural? God says, prepare yourself. How could you think that you could spend seven hours watching trash? That, why would I then show you 30 seconds of a glimpse of my glory? Sanctify yourself. That's another word, holiness. The holiness church of yesterday needs to be revived in America. Carmen, the old singer from the eighties, had this great song and I can't remember all the lyrics, but it was basically, hey, you call yourself a Christian, but you don't really care how you talk to the person working behind the counter and you don't really care about the example that you're setting for the next generation. Holiness, sanctify yourself, get ready. Listen, we gotta sanctify ourself for the promised land, are you ready to go to heaven today? Now, I ask this to the church all the time. If Jesus came back right now, literally, now, we all go, oh yeah, come back, Jesus. But are we really, really, really ready for God to check our heart, our mind, our attitude? Or do we need to do some more sanctification? Jesus rescued us and He did the work on the cross, but we are to do the work in ourselves. It says, humble yourself and the Lord will lift you up. I don't want the Lord to have to humble me. Now, the Lord humbles me, but I really wanna humble myself. I wanna, I wanna do it before God's gotta put the hammer down, you know what I'm saying? Okay, here we go, verse six. "Then Joshua spoke to the priests..." I want you to notice who goes before the battle. It's amazing, not the weapon guys, not the flag bearers, but the priests and the Levites. Levites were from the tribe of Levi and most of the priests or Levitical priests, the Levitical priest is a person who works in the house of God. My, my friend Richard is a Levitical priest in the house of God. He's ushering people into the presence of God by simply meeting them, greeting them, loving on them and welcoming them to the house of God. The Levites were, were men and women who were in the house of God ministering to people and ministering to others, using what God's given them to be a Levitical priest. Verse six. "Then Joshua spoke to the priests, saying, take up the ark of the covenant and cross over before the people." So, they took up the ark and went before the people. "And the Lord said, Joshua, this day I will begin..." Interesting word, "I will begin to exalt you in the sight of all of Israel, that they may know that I, that, that they may know that as I was with Moses, so I will be with you." Hey, Joshua, listen, I know that you've been leading for like 48 hours, 72 hours. I know I just blew your mind back there in chapter one when I said, hey, listen, you gotta arise, you gotta get up, you gotta go over, you gotta lead all these people. I know you don't think it, but listen, Moses dealt with the people and they, they wanted to murder Moses, they wanted to, they were always bickering and complaining. The difference here, Joshua, is these people, I'm gonna exalt you and they're gonna follow you. They need you to lead them towards me, closer to me. That you may know, verse eight. "You shall command the priests who bear the ark of the covenant, saying, 'When you've come to the edge of the Jordan, you shall stand in the Jordan.'" "So Joshua said to the children of Israel, 'Come here and hear the words of the Lord your God.' And Joshua said, 'By this you shall know that the living God is among you, that He will without fail drive out from before you the Canaanites, Hittites, Hivites, Persiaites, Gergites, Amorites, Jebusites, all theites. Behold, the ark of the covenant of the Lord of all the earth is crossing over before you into the Jordan.'" So, before we go too much further, the priest and, and the guys carrying the ark, when they got to the Jordan River, now, this Jordan River was not passable at this period in time. We already learned that when Rabbi hid the two spies, that he, they, she buried them or hid them under flax. And that flax was the product, the wheat, the, the stalks of their harvest. And so, that harvest indicates the time of year that they're crossing. Also, we'll see that it gives us a month and date and, and on the Jewish calendar, this is harvest time. So, I don't know that much about agriculture and, and floodplains and geography and stuff, but the Jordan is overflowing its banks. This river is, is not passable. So, he says, listen, when you get to the water, put your feet in it. Now, we're gonna see a lot of types and shadows and typology of New Testament things here. I want, I put it at the end of your notes, I want you to do some of your own homework and find all the times that the Jordan River is mentioned in scripture. So, this Jordan River has great importance and symbolism in the word of God. This Jordan River has great hidden and, and on-the-surface meaning. And so, go do your own diligence. One of them, which is my favorite, is Naam in the Old Testament, which hasn't even happened yet. Naam is told to go dip in the Jordan River seven times for his healing. A lot of people today, and hopefully one day Stacy and I will get to do it, when they visit Israel, they get baptized in the Jordan River as a symbol, this is where Jesus gets baptized. So, there's, they're, they are to take the ark of the covenant and stand in the Jordan River. This Jordan River, this spot, we're gonna see in just a minute, is the exact same spot, but on the other side of the banks, where John the Baptist was baptizing and where he ultimately baptizes Jesus. So, this crossing, this place is going to be preserved for almost 1,500 years, over a thousand, well over a thousand years. This territory, this land, we will see one day, is truly inhabited by the Israelites and will be the very place where Jesus cross, or Jesus, the crossing is where He's baptized. Here we go, verse 11 again. "Behold, the ark of the covenant of the Lord of all the earth is crossing over before you into the Jordan." That phrase, the lar, the ark of the covenant of the Lord of all the earth, this is the first time the Lord of all the earth is mentioned in scripture and it's mentioned seven times, or seven more times, I think. Verse 12. "Now therefore, take for yourselves twelve men from the tribes of Israel, one man from every tribe. And it shall come to pass, as soon as the souls of the feet of the priests who bear the ark of the Lord and the Lord of all the earth shall rest in the waters of the Jordan, that the waters of the Jordan shall be cut off, and the waters shall come down from upstream and they shall stand in a heap." Now, this is amazing, how God parts this river. So, before we get there in my notes, there are 12 men mentioned. How many disciples did Jesus have? 12. So, it's very interesting, this number 12 starts to appear in scripture. Now, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure how many times it's been appeared before, but Jacob had 12 sons, so we see the establishment of the 12 tribes of Israel. But I also would like for you to do some due diligence in your, in your scripture and look up the number 12. How many times is the number 12 mentioned? So, God tells Joshua, hey, listen, go get 12 guys now, don't get two spies, go get 12 men and we're gonna start this process of erecting 12 stones, altars, 12 stone, or a 12-stone altar to the Lord. So, the number 12, I just put a bunch of different references. Obviously, we saw 12 spies go originally into the promised land, 12 tribes of Israel. Elisha was plowing with, Elijah called them. Elijah poured 12 barrels of water over the altar when he called down fire. There are 12 gates of pearls entering into the city of heaven. There were 12 disciples. The lady who reached out and touched Jesus' robe had an issue of blood for 12 years. Jesus was 12 years old when He first taught in the, in the temple. The lady that got healed with the issue of blood, Jarius' daughter, as Jesus was going to heal Jarius' daughter, was 12 years of age. This number 12 represents government and government represents authority and power and dominion and territory. So, it's interesting what Jesus or what God's gonna tell these guys to do. He's gonna tell them to take 12 stones and build an altar. But I want you to go back to verse 13 with me and it just says this. "And it shall come to pass, as soon as the souls of the feet of the priests who bear the ark, the Lord of the earth shall rest in the waters of the Jordan, that the waters of the Jordan will be cut off. The waters that come from upstream and they shall stand in a heap." So, when God first parts the Red Sea, He parts the Red Sea. But in this scenario, He dams up the water, if you will. And so, all the water that's flowing down is going to be stopped supernaturally. Now, if you just went to the Mississippi River and stopped all, it would probably be, or longer with intense heat till you could even cross it because the ground would be so muddy because it's been saturated for centuries covered by water. Same with the Jordan. So, we're gonna see a supernatural drying of the land, a supernatural stop of these overflowing banks. But it gets better, verse 14. "So it was, when the people set out from their camp to cross over the Jordan, the priests bearing the ark of the covenant before the people, and those who bore the ark came to the Jordan. And the feet of the priests who bore the ark dipped in the edge of the water, for the Jordan overflows all of its banks during the whole time of the harvest, which is now. That the waters which came from upstream stood still, rose in a heap very far away at Adam." That's the name of the city. So, God doesn't just stop the water, He doesn't just part the Jordan, say, oh, just push, hey, just push that water back a couple feet, we'll let these boys and girls cross. No, God says, take it all the way back to that city named Adam. Now, why would the city be named Adam? Could it be named Adam because they might have thought that Adam dwelt there at one time, we don't know. But the fact that it rolls back all the way to Adam is a type or a, of the rolling back of our sin and the sin of these people and the sin of their forefathers and their forefathers, all the way back to the original sin of Adam. Now, this is building us up for the typology, the shadow, the symbol that this Jordan passing represents. Remember, the Israelites are on the Egypt side of the river. Anytime in your Bible that you see the word Egypt or the reference to Egypt, it's always symbol, not, it's not just talking about the physical location, it's always symbolizing sin, bondage, slavery, depravity, hopelessness, despair, enslavement. So, we're gonna see where God takes the water supernaturally beyond anybody's ability to do, stops the flow at the birth of sin, Adam, dries the land and allows them to supernaturally follow the ark of the covenant, to follow God through this. Now, the pre, now, they're gonna, we'll, we'll see them go by the ark in a minute, but the ark went first is what I'm trying to say. The ark is what's holding this thing back, the power of God. Verse 14, or verse 15. "And those who bore the, or they came, verse 16. And the waters which came downstream, came down from upstream, stood still, and rose a heap very far away at Adam, the city that is beside Zeratan. So, the waters that went down into the sea of Araba, the Salt Sea, failed and were cut off. And the people crossed over opposite, what, Jericho." So, they're on their way to their first battle, they don't know it yet, but they're on their way. "Then the priests who bore the ark of the covenant stood firm on dry ground in the midst of the Jordan, in the middle. And all of Israel crossed over on dry ground until all the people crossed completely over the Jordan." Pretty interesting. We have two partings of two different rivers or water streams. God rarely does... God rarely does the same miracle the same way twice. I wonder or the type is, I don't know. But I often have wondered or I've wondered a few times before, let's pretend that the Israelites didn't sin. And they had just crossed the Red Sea and then twelve days later, they're at the Jordan and the Jordan's overflowing. Would they just have expected, hey, God, Moses, take take that stick, put it back in the water, part the sea? They would have just walked through that baby with a lot of confidence. When God does a miracle in your life, the lesson to take away is that expect the next one. When God does one supernatural healing in your body, don't get stumped by the next illness or disease that comes your way. If God does one supernatural promotion or or um creative idea and design at your job space, don't think that it's one and done. Don't think, oh, I got my lucky day, God's now moved on to somebody else. Listen, live your life expecting God to part the Red Sea, part the Jordan. I don't know how God, we're gonna do it, but I'm gonna trust you all the way. Live your life expecting the next miracle. Also, let's think about people in Jordan. Uh Jericho, in Jericho, Rahab the spy in chapter two, or Rahab the harlot in chapter two. Don't you know that the news feed, the buzz around town is, uh oh, these Israelites just crossed another river and their God parted it the same way? Do you think the reason God did the same miracle twice was to send a message to the occupants of the promised land? Hey, listen, if I could defeat Egypt, don't you think I could defeat you? Yeah, it may have been a forty year hiatus, but you need to prepare yourself for my coming. So um I just asked the question, what other times in the Bible do you remember God doing the same miracle twice? Very, very, very rare. He usually always does something different, but in this case, he does it very similar both times. Verse or chapter four, we're not gonna read the whole chapter, but in verse two, it says, take twelve men out of the people, out of every tribe. That's a reference to Jesus picking twelve disciples. Joshua, remember, is a type or a shadow of Jesus Christ. Verse three. Here here's some 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 cool things. Uh command them saying, take these twelve men out of the tribes, command them, take you hence out of the middle of the Jordan. Out of the place where the priests' feet stood firm, twelve stones. And ye shall carry them over with you and leave them in the lodging place where you lodge tonight. In other words, hey, Joshua picks twelve guys, hey, guys, I need twelve of you, boom, 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 boom. You look good, you look good, you look strong. I want you to go, you see those priests where they're standing right now? I want you to pick up twelve large stones out of the middle of the river. I just want you to take them home tonight. We're gonna do something special with them tomorrow. So Joshua gets these twelve guys to pick up twelve stones for some reason and then they're gonna keep them overnight. Verse six. And and here's the reason. So we'll just skip to the punchline. They build an altar. They build this altar and this altar has huge uh reference later on in your New Testament. So these twelve men take twelve stones out of the Jordan and they build an altar at Gilgal. The first place of their dwelling. This is the city closest to the Jordan River, Gilgal is the city. These stones weren't just little rocks, these must have been really good sized stones. They built a twelve stone altar to God and they worshiped God there as a remembrance of what they did. So verse eight, Joshua says, hey, listen, um or verse six. Take these twelve stones according to the tribes of Israel, that they may be a sign among you. That when your children ask their fathers in time to coming saying, hey, what are these twelve stones here for? And you could tell them that God delivered them a second time through the Jordan River. Tell them that God's taking them to the promised land. Here's what we could take away from that. What is a miracle God's done in your life? And did you make a mem- memorial out of it? Did you make an altar out of it? Did you make a a journal entry out of it? When did God rescue you? When did God save you? When did God heal you? When did God deliver you? When did God change you? It's very vital that we write down the times that God delivered us. Write down the times that God brought you the perfect husband and you almost settled for the 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 wrong one. Write down the times that God delivered you with the exact amount you needed to pay that bill before foreclosure. And out of nowhere came the exact amount of of money. Remind yourself or write down or build a memorial the time that God delivered you from your brain tumor or your cancer. What what has God done in your life? Well, not that we're gonna worship this thing, but we will worship God and the thing reminds us of what God did. Too many times we forget what God did yesterday. And we don't believe he could do it again today because we forgot that he did it yesterday. So what Joshua tells these guys to do is, hey, get twelve stones, build an altar, we're gonna worship God here. So that a hundred years, five hundred years, a thousand years from now. When our ancestors walk by here and the kids go, hey, what's that, what's that altar built there for dad? Dad could go, well, my dad told me and his dad told him and his dad told him, all the way back to Joshua. This is the very spot that God delivered the Israelites from. It's a place of remembrance. We're gonna skip down to verse nine. And Joshua set up twelve stones in the midst of the Jordan. In the place where the feet of the priests which bare the Ark of the Covenant stood, and they are there to this day. So Joshua builds another altar. He takes twelve stones out of the river and builds a temple or an altar in the river too. So we see two separate reminders. And yes, the water comes back down, but that altar, the Bible says, is still there unto this day. Those two remembrances, one is where the place that that the priest stood and God dried up the ground. The second is the place where people would say, hey, what are what are those rocks there for? So there's two different altars that 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 were there. I wanna take you to Matthew, chapter three, real quick. Matthew, chapter three, go to your New Testament. And let's talk about these rocks one more time. And hopefully this will help put together this statement. Uh when John the Baptist is baptizing in the river Jordan. So go to Matthew, chapter three. And uh we'll just start in verse seven. And uh verse five tells us that that John the Baptist is this crazy guy that lives in the desert. He lives out of town, he lives close to this Jordan, but in the in the rural area of the desert, he eats locusts, he wears camel clothes, he doesn't shave. He's got bug breath. He's just this crazy guy, but he loves Jesus. He's baptizing people in the Jordan. Now, when we say that, sometimes we get this picture that here's the city, Jordan's right in the middle of the city. This is a, this is a little distance away. But when he, John, verse seven, let's go to Matthew, chapter three, verse seven. When he, John, saw many of the Pharisees and Sadducees coming to his baptism, he said, you brood of vipers. Who warns you to flee from the wrath to come? Who warned you to to flee judgment day? Therefore, bear fruit, oh, that sounds familiar, sanctify yourself, bear fruit worthy of repentance. Verse nine, kicker. And do not think to say to yourselves, we have Abraham for our father. For I say to you that God is able to raise up children to Abraham from these stones. Well, what stones is he talking about? He's standing next to this altar that Joshua built a thousand plus years earlier. Saying, hey, listen, I know that you Sadducees and Pharisees have taught your kids that this is where God crossed the river. But you're putting your faith of salvation in your blood and in your Jewish heritage. You're putting your salvation in your church attendance and in your good deeds and how much money you put in the plate. But listen, don't be fooled. God doesn't save us just because we're Jewish or just because we're good church attenders. If he wanted to, he could make children out of the rocks. He's talking about that altar that Joshua built as a reminder of the power of God, not the good deeds of the Pharisees or men. So that's the importance of that. Um here's some things that this crossing represents. The crossing in verse eleven, um look at verse eleven. And it came to pass, back to Joshua, sorry, Joshua, chapter four, verse eleven. Came to pass when all the people were clean, passed over. When all the people were clean, passed over, that the Ark of the Lord passed over and the priest into the presence of the people. This crossing over is a representation of salvation. Listen. They had to clean and prepare themselves on the Egypt side of the river. The river represents baptism. The repre- the river represents water. The repre- the river represents the cleaning of salvation. The stones that Ja- Jos- the that Joshua built in the middle of the river, they didn't choose themselves. They didn't do anything, they just are there being cleansed by the river. This picture of the Jewish people, the Israelites crossing this river is a picture of yours and I's salvation today. It says, they were clean and passed over. Listen, you can get baptized. But if you're not first cleaned by the blood of Jesus, if you didn't first repent of your sins, if you didn't first sanctify yourself. Prepare yourself, then getting wet is no big deal. What this represents is that before we cross the river, before we can go into the place that God's called us. We've got to repent and be covered with the blood of Jesus. The Passover was in Egypt. The blood was shed for the Israelite. But they had to receive that, they had to to cleanse themselves under the blood of Jesus. Then you cross through the river into the promised land. The modern day picture or living that out is that you and I gotta get our sins taken care of at the cross of Jesus Christ. Then we've gotta go through the water. We've gotta go through the river in order for God to take us into the promised land. And when we cross that river, we build a memorial. We say, hey, listen, this is what God did for me. I was sanctified, I was baptized and here's the date. And in our church, we give people a certificate, we give them a ring, we give them a white stone. We celebrate it with shouts and clapping and joy. We're so excited when you get baptized. But but we know the date, we remember that memorial. It's kinda like you remember specific events. Where were you when John F. Kennedy was shot? Where were you when the when the uh um uh uh space shuttle blew up in the eighties? Where were you when OJ Simpson was getting sentenced? You have these memor- these memory, where were you at nine eleven? I know the OJ thing. But where were you when the Twin Towers were hit? Where, when did you get born? When did you get married? When did you graduate or get that degree? This is the most memorial thing so that people can look back and they'll say, hey, listen, uh weren't you that slave that used to live in Egypt? Wait, aren't you the guy or gal that's been struggling with that addiction for forty years? You've been in and out of rehab all your life, dude. Don't tell me you changed. Yeah, listen, I I know it's crazy. Listen, I used to be a liar, I used to be a cheater, I used to be a thug. I used to be a a crook, I used to be greedy, I used to be selfish, I used to be prideful. But you know what, man? I got sanctified through the blood of Jesus. I got baptized, the old me died. I'm in the promised land and I can't explain to you how it happened. I don't know how God dried up the river. I don't know how he took my sin all the way back to Adam, but man, I just made a memorial and I just said, you know what? Here I am. Here's my altar. I've encouraged some people to do this and if if you feel led to do it. Maybe you physically go build something and put it in your backyard, a cross, an altar. And you just say, God, I just, this is a reminder. Maybe you get a pocket knife and carve it in the tree instead of putting, you know, John and Sue, you just, you just put, Jesus saved me. God changed me. Mark it, make a memorial. Look at verse eighteen, and it came to pass when the priests that bore the Ark of the Covenant of the Lord, when they came up out of the midst of the Jordan and the souls of the priests were lifted up onto the dry land, that the waters of the Jordan returned to their place. And flowed over this banks as it did before. So after the miracle, the water comes back. Um here's an interesting thing, it's in the uh um it's on the last page of your notes, it's just a a short reference. The Jordan River is the supply line for two, two bodies of water in in uh Israel. Today. One is called the Sea of Galilee and one is called the Dead Sea. This Jordan River is a representation of the river that flows from the throne of Jesus Christ. In Revelation, there's a throne of, there's the throne of God and a river that flows from that throne. And it feeds us, rivers bring life, they bring water, sustenance, hydration, they 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 breed life, they represent life. But there's two types of people that receive the river, the water. One is like the Sea of Galilee. The Sea of Galilee is full of fish, full of life. It's teeming with with uh activity and and sustenance for the people. People, people go to it for their needs, food, water, they go to it for that which brings them life. The other sea that's fed by the Jordan River is the Dead Sea. The Dead Sea to this day has no life. It is a salty sea, it's not good for anything, it's damned up. Nobody receives from the Dead Sea. People receive from the Sea of Galilee. So this Jordan River represents so much in our crossing to the promised land. Tonight, I really want you to ask yourself this question. When you die, are you ultimately gonna pass into the promised land? Well, on this side of the river Jordan, you gotta sanctify yourself. You gotta get right with God. Not, oh, yeah, I'm 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 good with the man upstairs, oh, yeah, he loves me, he knows, no, no, no. You gotta fall on your face at his cross and say, I repent of my sin. Then you need to be water baptized. And then the day the Lord sends his spirit to pick you up, he'll usher and go before you and take you across that spiritual Jordan into the promised land. But there's a flip side here on earth. The flip side is you're saved. You've repented of your sins, you're water baptized. It's now time to cross that river into the promised land here on earth. That's what it represents. That promised land on earth is the job, the position, the career, that thing that God created you to do. Have you ever asked the question, what if Billy Graham had went on to play professional baseball, which was his dream? God would have been in the stands, God would have been clapping for him, but God would have said, Billy, man, I created you to be the world's greatest preacher. Man, I'm glad you enjoyed your life playing baseball, but that wasn't the promised land I had for you. It's what you had, but I had this thing. See, what if Corey Ten Boom or uh had never crossed the promised land and turned her little watch shop into a place that hid, her house, that hid uh many, many Jews from from suffering the the uh uh the tyranny of Hitler and the Nazi army. What if, what if men and women did not answer the call and enter the promised land on earth? Let it be said of you and I, that we got saved. We get baptized and we go live the rest of our life doing what God created us to do. So that when we enter the ultimate promised land, our Lord, our Father, our Savior could say, good job. Well done, man. You you rocked it. You you taught that second grade class like nobody's business. You know what? You worked so diligently under that boss that was a jerk. But you know what? Your faithfulness ultimately planted a seed and you didn't know it because he fired you eighteen years ago. He got saved yesterday. Thank the worst experience ever, but I used that to save somebody. Enter the promised land for which God created you. Don't stay in the desert any longer. God bless you. We'll see you Thursday night, six thirty, same place. We're gonna kick off in chapter five of the book of Joshua and we're gonna enter into the Battle of Jericho. And we're gonna find out what God tells them to do before battle. So God bless you. We'll see you next time. If you're looking for a church to attend this Sunday, we'll have in-house worship at Whitestone Church, eleven AM. God bless you. Have a great night.